School who are around to observe our proceedings. Thank you for coming. We proceed to item number five, approval of the agenda for today. There are about six written proposals for order of business, Honorable Chair. I may read them as follows. Request by City Mayor for the approval of programs, projects and activities for our supplemental budget number three general fund for calendar year 2025 in amount of 53 million 589,000 and 470 pesos. As you asked, the corresponding approval of the supplemental emission programs for our SB number three general fund for the same amount. The second request for insertion is for us to pass a resolution approving the 17th Civil Aviation Authority of Development's anniversary and Women's Month celebration on 31 March 2025 by the Civil Aviation Authority of Development. The third written request is for us to enact a resolution approving the conduct of the 2025 first quarter aquaculture survey by the Philippine Statistics Authority in Barangay Banjado, Baladero, Polot, Sengaydod, Blakkarami, Anex from 18 March 2025 to 28 March 2025. The fourth written request for insertion is for us to pass a resolution approving the 2025 March labor force survey, jobs and skills survey, field data collection in Barangay Catatmal Malabay on March 28 by the Philippine Statistics Authority. The fifth written request, Honorable Chair, is for us to enact a resolution approving the conduct of the 2025 rice and corn stock survey commercialized by the Philippine Statistics Authority in Barangay Agwada, Baladero, Beasanroke, Tinago and Tepetit District from March 2025 until December 2025. The last but not least, written request for insertion is for us to pass a resolution approving the conduct of the survey of wholesale selling by the Philippine Statistics Authority in Barangay Karangan, Barangay Malinkol, Barangay Dunyam Solo and Barangay Babay Santa Cruz in the Mondays of April to December 2025. Honorable Chair, those are the six written requests for insertion. I promote with due emotion to approve the agenda for today with six enclosures as enumerated, Honorable Chair.
There is a motion from the Honorable Majority Floor Leader for the approval of our agenda for today with six enclosures as being presented. Motion approved.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. We proceed to item number six, approval of the minutes of presentation. There are no copies of the minutes attached to our order of business. We proceed to item number seven, please proceed to literacy. This is the request for proceeding. Number one, 2025 annual budget of Barangay Baladero in amount of 10 million 313,000 and 714 pesos duly endorsed by the City Budget Office for our approval. And number two, annual budget of Barangay Bagakay in amount of 7 million 849,000 and 275 pesos also duly endorsed by the City Budget Office for our approval. Honorable Chair, I yield to the chairman of the committee on barangay affairs, Honorable John Carlo Morello to introduce an agreement action on these two items. Number one, number two, annual budget of two barangays, Honorable Chair.
The Honorable John Carlo Morello is now recognized by the chair for the appropriate motion.
Thank you, Majority Floor. Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to pass the 2025 annual budget of Barangay Banjado in amount of 10 million 313,714 and 2025 annual budget of Barangay Bagakay in amount of 7 million 849,275. For first reading with reservation, Madam Chair.
Pass for first reading with reservations. Motion approved.
Thank you, Madam Chair, considering the urgency and necessity of the said 2025 annual budget of Barangay Banjado, 2025 annual budget of Barangay Bagakay are passing for second and final reading with the internal rules.
Due to the urgency of this request resolution, the Honorable Morello is passing these two items on the second and final reading, weaving the internal rules. Any comment, remarks? Hearing none. Motion approved the second and final reading, weaving the internal rules.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Letter D, messages and communications. Number one, resolution number 76-25 from the Segunian Maligan of Osamis Occidental approving the ordinance number 132-2024-A of the Segunian Resolution of Osamis and ordinance prescribing for the posting of emergency numbers in conspicuous spaces in 50 barangays of Osami City. Honorable Chair, I recommend that we just take note this approval by the Senate of legal to the resolution number 76-25. It will be duly noted in the Record City Council with thanks, Honorable Chair.
For item number one, messages and communications move by the Honorable Majority Floor Leader that this be just duly noted. Motion approved.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Number two, notice of hearing from the National Water Resources Board regarding the application of insured water supply Ernest San Raptan for certificate of public convenience to operate and maintain a water work system within the Emerald Celebration subdivision Bagakay of Osami City with its proposed rates. I understand the hearing will be on March 24. It will be a Monday hearing in Manila and the LGU was punished capes of this notice of hearing, Honorable Chair, as well as by Council of Bagakay and the local water authority of Osami City. Honorable Chair, I understand there was no coordination being done by this applicant insured water supply with the LGU of Osamis about their application. You only heard of this when we received a copy of the notice of hearing from the National Water Resources Board, Honorable Chair. So, may I now yield to my honorable colleagues for any comment on this application to have a water works system within the subdivision of Emerald in Barangay Bagakay. If you have any concerns, I would like to know and perhaps later on I can suspend the rules to allow any inputs from our legal team, from the City Mayor's office, also from the PP Law, if they show desire, Honorable Chair. So first, I'd like to hear the comments from my honorable colleagues on this application, especially the residents of Barangay Bagakay. We have here Honorable Asier Romero, former captain of Bagakay, Honorable Chair.
Okay, manifested by the Honorable Majority Floor Leader, the notice of hearing from the National Water Resources Board regarding the application of insured water supply through Ernest San Raptan for certificate of public convenience to operate and maintain a water works system. May I hear from the chairperson of the public utility, the Honorable Romero, please for any comments or remarks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Majority Floor Leader. Being one of the resident in Barangay Bagakay, Madam Chair, Kuan, ang water system diha sa Emerald, Malaysia.
Emerald.
Oh, hinay kami nga nagpuyo medyo dito sa Imabaw na pit, ang kaning water system na to sa moed, sa prime water, maglisod, yun may uhuag tubig tungod kay, tungod anang nagkuha po ng mga subdivision na to. So, delay siya kasupply tungod sa kadaghan namong mga konsumante diha, sa tubig konsumante. Much better, uga naasya kauglingon kay, delay siya naasya uga naasya kauglingo water system. Considering ang Bagakay daghan na siya, uga tubod diha. Madam Chair, delay kita, maglisod, uga tubig diha, uga magdrill diha kay, kanang Barangay Bagakay daghan 'yung mga spring diha, tubod. Mas maayaw, uga magdrill sila diha, to supply sa ilahang duha ka, duha ka, Kuan, kaning ilang subdivision diha kay. Kay, makuha siya sa prime water, maghakot tagod ang kuwan, karoon, maghakot ang atong prime water dito, mag-supply lang sa Imabaw na pit, ng mga balay. Much better, uga magdrill sila, ilahang kauglingo water system para masmuk, Kuan.
Okay.
Yusabu lang 'yung tubig diha, anytime.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Honorable Romero. In eh...
May inquire, ang prime water ang moed na i-konexyon sa Emerald, as of now. So, not all residents?
Actually, naman sila 'yung water system diha, pero siguro delay kayo kasupply kaning Rufina. Rufina ilahang, na Rufina, uga Mediatrics. Naasya, some of them, pero delay tanan. Dayon kay, tungod lagi na ikauglingo water system karoon, existing ang kanang kuwan, pero siguro wala gawer kayo, Madam Chair kay, delay po siguro kayo ako, hindi kayo kasupply. So, ang uban nagkuha sa prime water. That's why delay na kasaka ang supply dito sa Amua na pit. Siguro sa Amua makasaka pa, pero delay diyan katong sa Imabaw pag 'yung na pit sa Amua, hindi na sila kasupply. That's why, mas better, uga magdrill sila, siguro mas more bigger than kanang existing karoon.
So, Honorable Chair, the prime water or the moed has an interest on this application. They might have an idea about this application being distributor of water in our city. I think they could make their outfit manifestation during hearing regarding this application of the insured water supply, Honorable Chair. May we hear also from Honorable Siso, Honorable Chair?
Yes, Honorable Siso, you are now recognized by the chair.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. The situation that we are facing right now is, I think we need to, if we have an opposition or objection to the application of Mr. Ernestan on the Mediatrics water system because I think they need to have a certificate of convenience before the National Water Resources Board. As of the present, they already had an existing water work system along the Rufina subdivision, which they also already own. And with the manifestation of the Honorable Romero regarding the incapability of the prime waters to address the needs of the consumers in the upper Bagakay portion, I think this would be on the prime waters resolution, Madam Chair. As of the moment, probably the Rufina, ah no, I mean the, what's this, Mediatrics really need a resolution or a go signal, a clearance coming from us if we have no objection on their application. So, probably with that, if we are not going, if we're going to object on their application, they will know, they will have a, they will have no water system with the residences inside Mediatrics. And we should also consider that they are also residents of Osamis. And with that, we also need to address also their concern on the needs, on the basic necessity of having a water. So, I think that would, that would be my manifestation, Madam Chair, that only a clearance coming from us and only on the regulatory maybe if we have powers regarding the tariffs. And I think we need to also clear them for them to have a clearance to get the resolution for the water work system, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you for your manifestation, Honorable Siso. Any other comments or remarks regarding the application of insured water supply?
Yes, Honorable Chair.
Yes.
Had the LGU been consulted beforehand, before sending their application with the National Water Resources Board, LGU could have undertaken an investigation on the matter about the situation in the area, about the need of water by the residents at Emerald. However, that's already a matter of being muted because we have now time constraints if any to provide our inputs to the board, which is in Manila. So, we might as well wait for the action of the board and then upon approval, we could undertake necessary coordination with the insured water supply of Mr. Ernest San Raptan to make the necessary coordination about the project at the subdivision of Emerald and Barangay Bagakay, Honorable Chair. That's all. In the meantime.
Okay, thank you. We would like to inquire from the office, is there a date? When would be the notice of hearing? Wala, wala pa, wala. There was no fixed date for the notice of hearing?
March 24, if you will.
Ano sa, March? Ah, March 24? Okay.
Honorable Chair, I would like to move to suspend the rules. In the meantime, to allow perhaps our legal team or LGU to also get their inputs, whatever is the take of the mayor on this matter. We will hear first from Attorney Pasi Solita, Honorable Chair, and then Attorney Cas, and then Mam Uano, PP Law.
Okay. Rule suspended. We would like to accommodate Mr. Uano. Our visitors from the prime water?
Madam Chair, good afternoon. Thank you so much. Mr. Chair, the City Legal Office holds the position that as of, as it stands, considering that this letter was sent last February and that the same was already published in a newspaper and that it has been posted in conspicuous places in Osami City, the City Council of Osami is, Prime Water, the punong barangay of Barangay Bagakay, still has time to file their respective opositions, if any. However, we also concede to the Honorable Marsiliyan Tapayans position that we may also, we also have the option to wait on the action of the National Water Resources Board before and, before the LGU will file its appeal in case that the decision is completely adversarial to us. However, as of this moment, should the LGU post no opposition on the application of Ernestan as well as Prime Water or that any other impeded parties, the City Legal Office is of the position that the best, the best thing to do right now is to wait for the resolution of the NWRB, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Any query from our...
Do you have any agenda, Attorney? Attorney Cas, may we hear, Honorable Chair? From Attorney Cas Libertario?
Yes, Attorney, you are now recognized by the chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We are, the City Legal maintains its position that we will, it would be best to wait on the resolution of the National Water Resources Board. However, we also recognize that as the regulatory authority in the city, we just want insured water supply to coordinate with the LGU in their, if, if they ever get a CPC in their implementation of their water works in Emerald subdivision Bagakay of Osami City. That would be all, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ma'am.
Thank you. We, we hear also, any input from Mam Uano, PP Law, if any? Mam Uano, may we give a floor to Mam Uano, Honorable Chair?
Yes, Ma'am, you are now recognized by the chair for additional input.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Thank you, Attorney. So, as in the exercise of the regulatory power, this office would just ensure that the compliance shall be followed and so that whatever the, the outcome of this hearing, we will then ensure inspection and proper compliance from the applicant. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Ma'am. Any other comments?
So, thank you. We would like to thank the legal team, LGU, for their inputs regarding the matter, Honorable Chair. I now move to resume the rules.
Rules is resume.
And if my colleagues has no more information or idea about this matter, Honorable Chair, in the meantime, I just recommend that this hearing on March 24 at the National Water Resource Board in Manila will be duly noted in Record City Council and we'll await for the outcome of this application by the, what is the action of the board in Manila, Honorable Chair. In the meantime, we duly note that in Record City Council, Honorable Chair. I may proceed with the next item, Honorable Chair? Number three, letter dated Master 10-25 from the Osamis Philippine Science and Commerce in Kuwait, especially regarded to members of Segunian for considering the passing of ordinance instituting allow our compliance period for business permit reservation. Honorable Chair, I think this, this communication is noted with thanks by LGU and behalf of the mayor. We warmly welcome their, their gratitude to this august body, Honorable Chair. And this is duly and well taken, noted in Record City Council, Honorable Chair.
Thank you. Item number three, manifested by the Honorable Majority Floor Leader that this be just duly noted and this be referred to the office, the City Council.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. The Honorable Committee reports submitted under item number eight. Item number nine, calendar of business. Please proceed to literacy whereby we have six appropriations, Honorable Chair. I may start with the first appropriations. The request of City Mayor to approve the programs, projects and activities or PPS for our supplemental budget number three general fund in amount of 53 million 589,000 and 470 pesos as you asked for approval of the expanding supplemental emission programs in the same amount, Honorable Chair. I daily promote with due emotion to approve the PPS and SIP for SB number three general fund in amount of 53 million 589,417 pesos for approval and the first reading with reservations, Honorable Chair.
More for first reading with reservations, this approval of the programs, projects and activities for our supplemental budget number three and for the general fund for calendar year 2025 in the amount of 53 million 589,417. Motion approved for first reading.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. In view of the urgent demand of public interest in the residency of public service, under spouse, sound fiscal management, I move that motion to approve the PPS and SIP for SB number three general fund in amount of 53 million 589,417 pesos for approval on second and final reading, weaving the general rules, Honorable Chair.
For interest of public service, move by the Honorable Majority Floor Leader for the approval of programs, projects and activities for our supplemental budget general fund in the amount of 53 million 589,417. More for its approval on, and the first reading with reservation. Motion approved. Okay, na to?
Thank you, Honorable Chair. With the approval on second reading or third and final reading of this PPS and SIP, I would like to advance a permission that we need to have a specification tomorrow for the subsequent approval of the supplemental budget number three for the same amount. Honorable Chair, tomorrow, Wednesday, I would like to ask your kind diligence with our specification if you are amenable in the morning at 10 o'clock tomorrow for this SB number three because, you know, at 12 o'clock tomorrow, we have a meeting with the owners of the Bucakan Hill property and it really be quite difficult to have that schedule. In fact, the schedule was scheduled many weeks before and I find hard to really have that schedule. And finally, the owners submit that they are willing to talk with the request that the mayor should be around. So, the time given by the mayor to me is 12 o'clock tomorrow. That's why, Honorable Chair, I request your kind indulgence and perseverance that we have the specification tomorrow at 10 o'clock in the morning. So, in the objections, Honorable Chair, may I proceed to the appropriations number two. Honorable Chair, the second appropriations is the request for us to pass a resolution approving the 17th Civil Aviation Authority of Development's anniversary, Women's Month celebration on 31 March 2025 by Civil Aviation Authority of Development, or CAAP. I now yield to the chairman of the Committee on Public Administration, Honorable Asier Romero, to introduce and recommend action on this item, Honorable Chair.
Honorable Romero, you are now recognized by the chair for the appropriate motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Majority Floor Leader. Madam Chair, I move to pass this resolution. A resolution approving the 17th Civil Aviation Authority of the Philippines, CAAP, anniversary and Women's Month celebration on 31 March 2025 by the Civil Aviation Authority of the Philippines, CAAP. Madam Chair, passing this for first reading with reservation.
Move by the Honorable Romero to pass this resolution on the first reading to reservations as being manifested. Motion approved.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In the interest of public service, Madam Chair, I move to pass this resolution for second and final reading, weaving the internal rules.
Due to the urgency of this request resolution, Honorable Romero is passing this resolution approving the 17th Civil Aviation Authority of the Philippines, or CAAP, anniversary and Women's Month celebration on 31 March 2025 by the Civil Aviation Authority of the Philippines. Motion approved. Any comment, remarks, hearing none, motion approved.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Appropriations number three, resolution approving the conduct of the 2025 first quarter aquaculture survey by the Philippine Statistics Authority of twenty-two five first quarter aquaculture survey by the Philippine Statistics Authority in Barangay Benidro, Barangay Pulot, Bay Sanay Jot, and Bay Carmen Anex from eighteen March twenty-two five until twenty-eighth March twenty-twenty-five. Honorable Chair, I now yield to the Chairman on the Committee on Statistics and the Quatricienses, Honorable John Sakin, to introduce and make an action on this item, Honorable Chair.
The Honorable Juanito Sakin Junior is now recognized, Madam Chair, for the appropriate motion.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Honorable Chair, I'm going to pass a resolution on joint motion approving the conduct of twenty-two five first quarter aquaculture survey by the Philippine Statistics Authority in Barangay Banjadero, Pulot, Sanay Jot, Carmen Anex from eighteen March twenty-twenty-five until twenty-eighth March twenty-twenty-five on first reading with reservation, Madam Chair.
For first reading with reservations, motion approved.
To address the request of this, uh, Officer of the Chair, I move for the second and final reading waving the internal rules on joint motion.
Due to the urgency of this request resolution, the Honorable Sakin is passing this on the second and final reading waving the internal rules. Any comment, remarks, hearing none, motion approved on the second and final reading.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Appropriations number four, uh, resolution approving the twenty-two five March labor force survey jobs and skilled survey with data collection in Barangay Catatmanabay on March twenty, twenty-eight, twenty-two five by the Philippine Statistics Authority. Honorable Chair, I yield to the Committee on Labor, National Chairman, Honorable Salo Sabador, I yield to the Co-Chairman, Honorable Juanito Sakin Junior, to introduce and action on this item, Honorable Chair.
The Honorable Sakin is now recognized, Madam Chair, for the appropriate motion.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Honorable Chair, I'm going to pass a resolution approving the twenty-two five March labor force survey, jobs and skilled survey, field data collection in Barangay Catatmanabay on March twenty to twenty-eight, twenty-two twenty-five by the Philippine Statistics Authority for first reading reservation, Honorable Chair.
More for first reading with reservations, motion approved.
On that note, Honorable Chair, I'm going to pass on the second and final reading, waving the internal rules on joint motion.
Presented and move with the Honorable Sakin to pass this resolution on the second and final reading, waving the internal rules. Any comment, remarks, hearing none, motion approved on the second and final reading, waving the internal rules.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Appropriations number five, uh, resolution approving the conduct of twenty-two five rice and corn stock survey commercial by Philippine Statistics Authority in Bay Aguada, Barangay Benidro, Barangay Babasandruki, Bay Tinago and Barangay fifty district from March twenty-five until December twenty-two five. I now yield to Chairman of the Committee, Ari Costa, Honorable Sancho Waminal Junior, to introduce and make an action on this item, Honorable Chair.
The Honorable Sancho Waminal is now recognized, Madam Chair, for the appropriate motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Majority Floor Leaders. Good afternoon, everyone. This humble representation would like to move a resolution approving the conduct of the twenty-two five rice and corn stock survey commercial by the Philippine Statistics Authority in Barangay Aguada, Barangay Banjadero, Barangay Bay Sanruki, Barangay Tinago, and Barangay fifty district from March twenty-two five until December twenty-twenty-five. Be approved on first reading with reservation, Madam Chair, on joint motion.
More for first reading with reservations, motion approved.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for the sake of public welfare and given its utmost urgency, may I therefore move that this be approved on second and final reading, waving the internal rules of this sagonean. Thank you.
Due to the urgency of this request resolution, Honorable Waminal is passing this on the second and final reading, waving the internal rules. This resolution approving the conduct of the twenty-twenty-five rice and corn stock survey commercial by the Philippine Statistics Authority or PSA in Barangay Aguada, Barangay Banjadero, Barangay Sanruki, Barangay Tinago, Barangay fifty district from March to, uh, until December of twenty-twenty-five. Approved on a first reading, I mean, approved on a second and final reading. Any comment, remarks, hearing none, motion approved.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. The last but not least, appropriations number six, resolution approving the conduct of survey wholesale selling by the Philippine Statistics Authority in Barangay Carangan, Maningkol, Dunya Consuelo, and Bay Santa Cruz in the Mondays of April to December twenty-twenty-five. I now yield to Chairman of the Committee on Commerce, Trade, and Industry, Honorable Catherine Lim, to introduce and make an action on this item, Honorable Chair.
The Honorable Catherine Lim is now recognized, Madam Chair, for the appropriate motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On joint motion, I would like to pass a resolution approving the conduct of the survey wholesale selling by the Philippine Statistics Authority, PSA in Barangay Carangan, Barangay Maningkol, Barangay Dunya Consuelo, and Barangay Bay Santa Cruz in the Mondays of April to December twenty-twenty-five for first reading with reservation.
More for first reading with reservations, motion approved.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Due to its public interest, I would like to pass this on second and final reading, waving the internal rules.
For public interest, the Honorable Catherine Lim is passing this request resolution for the second and final reading, waving the internal rules. Any comment, remarks, hearing none, motion approved on the second and final reading, waving the internal rules.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. There are no pending matters on my table under item number ten, basis for third reading. So at this juncture, may we have the pleasure and privilege to hear on PCL matters, Honorable Dang Siso, Honorable Chair?
The Honorable, on PCL matters, we would like to recognize Honorable Siso.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. With, uh, regards to our upcoming, uh, PCL interim general assembly and CAP development program at, uh, Bagakay this coming June two to four twenty-twenty-five, the theme would be honoring service, advancing reforms, and sustaining progress. Uh, the PCL interim assembly highlights the recognition of the three-term counselors and sharing of legislative actions on sustainable development matters. That would be the theme for this coming.
That would be on June?
June two to four, Madam Chair.
Two, two to four?
And I assume, and, uh, during, uh, with confirmation or mayor, I assume that all our counselors will be attending this event at Bagakay, Madam Chair.
How many are?
All of them.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Noted, Madam Chair, you report, Honorable Siso.
Except, thank you, Honorable Chair. May I also have the pleasure and privilege to hear on PCL matters, Honorable Jean-Pel, the internal relation, Honorable Chair?
For PCL matters, may we hear from Honorable Duay Long, so please?
None at this moment, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair.